We're gonna get our implications tonight, it's gonna be provided by Ryan Coleman.
Father God, thank you for gathering us today to do the business of the city of Silicon. I pray that everything we do, say and think may be glorified you, and we pray.
Amen.
Thank you, Ryan. And I guess we'll stay up. You're up first.
Okay.
So the first thing on our work session agenda tonight is discussion that's necessary about different architecture. Ryan Coleman to amend the Silicon Recreations and Aquatic Center to include additional design services for the city of Silicon. Oh, and this will fully develop.
So, is this, can y'all hear me fine?
Yes.
So, this really, from a bottom line standpoint, doesn't really affect y'all in terms of design fees? Because the reality is, is you've given the Parks and Recreation a certain amount of money to do this work. And the redevelopment of the old municipal pool is coming out of that number. So you're already planning on paying fees based on this number. So all this is gonna be doing is adding that scope of work to the design contract so that they can start it. It's gonna have two different schedules. We've talked about this before. The redevelopment on 21, that's a nine-month design process. What you're talking about doing on the old municipal pool site is a lot shorter. So we're treating it as two different projects under the same design contract. The only caveat is, is just like the state fee schedule, when projects grow in budget, then the fee percentage, the design fee percentage shrinks. When the, when the project, let's say it's a million dollars, well, that's, you're gonna have a higher fee percentage on a million-dollar project than you are a $28 million project. So while I say you accounted for it, there is gonna be a little bit of difference, but not a lot of difference. It's gonna be changed in comparison to what we've talked about before. So what I said, Alex, is a resolution basically for you guys to add that to our, to our scope of work so that we can start it on accordingly. Cost of that, we, we, we're not there yet. I mean, the reality is, is you wanna redevelop it and do it, and we're gonna do it for the most economical possible way we can. And, but I can't sit here and tell you how much eight courts plus a basketball court plus demolition of the building plus filling in the pool, all the stuff that we're talking about, we don't have a number for that yet.
When do you think was wood, Ryan?
During schematic design, we would target in the first month, get putting you a budget together for it. So you can talk about if it meets your needs, if it needs to be cut back or added to, that, that whole, the whole thing.
But since we plan to do our own demolition, we could go ahead and start with that, right? Or do you wanna conserve part of them?
Yeah, we talked about, so the city of Silicon is gonna self-perform some things. One thing that we talked about is demoing the building itself. And then you can also subcontract out some of the work, as long as it doesn't exceed a certain number. So maybe even filling in the pool and demoing the building is part of something that you'll be talking about. And then if you were to fill in the pool, we've talked about providing some specs because that'll be a pretty technical process. Who the city has talked about negotiating that work with is more than capable of doing that type of work. They're the best around. That's who I would call. So if you choose to go that direction, I feel comfortable that you will be able to do it the right way.
So Steve, do you have anything to add? I have, I do have a couple of questions. I was gonna ask Ryan, so once we do this tonight, what does that timeframe look like? So I know you said within the first month, you would know like the cost, so.
We, we should be able to get you in a good ball, and, and what's important about that is, is it affects your other project. You give the Parks and Rec this much money, so it's imperative that we find out how much the first project costs because it may impact the programming of your bigger project. So we'll jump on that ASAP. That'll be the first thing we kinda talk about in the initial kickoff meeting for that is, how can we keep that cost down enough to, and, and still do it the right way? You don't wanna do it halfway, but also save enough for the big project that you guys have been talking about for longer.
So Steve, so, you know, I'm always trying to see what a timeframe is. I'm, I'm all about, you know, seeing where we are and then what's the end game. So, so after tonight, what does that timeframe look like, that first meeting and?
So the first meeting, Mel set that up. The only thing we're really waiting on is the specs for filling the pool. As you know, we've talked to Reed, and they want to, they said they'll demo the building for us, but we wanna fill the pool in first, because we have heavy machinery moving around this big gaping hovel in the ground. So, once we get the specs for how they want filled and packed and the lifts and all that stuff, we'll start writing up the scope of work and try to get that process started and get the path clear for them to start building.
Okay, that makes sense. So how long do you think it'll take to get those specs? Are, are we already waiting for them, or y'all just waiting for us to do this?
They're, they're waiting on it. What I would say too is, the recommendation from the design team, Michael Rice, was on the phone call, or on the email thread, is to hire a geotechnical engineer to ma, to administer or to look at that work. Because the reality is, is like, they're gonna fill in that pool and, and it's called lifts, but think about it every six or eight inches, and you're gonna come back and fill, compact. Because you don't want any, if you're putting a playing surface like a tennis court or a pickleball court, any imperfection under it will show in the surface. So that's gotta be done correct. So it, you'll be hiring a geotechnical engineer to manage that because the city's self-performing that, not an architect, not an engineer, you guys and your qualified team will be looking at that. We'll help in there, but the geotech will be giving that data to the city. And timeframe, I can help answer that. It's probably a three to, three to four month max time to get bid drawings out. And then you got a month of bid, and then award the contract, and then they should be mobilized sometime in the spring doing that work.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
That's on, that's on the pickle, that's on the pickleball basketball court stuff, not on the 21 stuff.
So any of this, that we had the guy come in that did the special assessment on the ground, took core samples and all that? None of that correlates to what you're talking about?
Not really, because actually, he was, he was investigating whether or not there were sinkholes. So it's a different level of what you're asking him.
This guy's gonna stay with it from start to finish?
He's gonna probably come and test, like every time it gets lifted, or maybe every couple of times the lift happens, he'll actually come in and do a compaction test to make sure it's meeting the spec.
So it's not a one-time test, he'll be with it throughout?
That's right. And that is some cost that we, you'll incur some cost there from somebody that you weren't expecting, but it's not much.
I have one more question. So you did say that this project would affect the bigger project as far as price, but what about as far as the timeline? Would that push our timeline back as far?
The only thing that would affect the timeline is if we end up finding out this cost an astronomical amount of money and we have to go back to the bigger project and pull it way back. Because, you know, if you got $28 million, unless, I'm not saying this is what it's gonna cost, but let's pretend it cost $2 million and you had 28 set for something else, and you're gonna have to find $2 million out of that project to pull out.
So you're not gonna be able to do any design stuff on that one?
No, we can't. We're gonna move forward because, I mean, the good thing is, is we're working on both of them simultaneously, so we should, we should be able to help you predict a little bit. But, you know, when we get the bids back on it, that's more in the middle of construction documents for that project, we may have to pull back on finishes or some, we may have to find something to compensate for the fact that you just spent more money than you thought you did.
Okay, but that's what I was worried about, just that, that timeline as far as design and getting everything else to be.
It's not really, it shouldn't affect unless something crazy happens. It shouldn't affect the two timelines are kinda independent from each other. We just need this information to fully do this information, so it shouldn't affect the timeline too much.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ryan. Do you guys have any more questions for Ryan?
I, I don't have any, Ryan, but I got, I do have a question. Where would we pull the money from when it's time to make that?
This project?
Yeah, for the project we speak of.
I have a question. Do you know how much we're gonna pull? We haven't discussed the amount of pull it from?
I got you. So that, that'll come as we know how much it is depending on?
That's correct.
Okay, fine, thanks.
You got something more?
No.
Josh, any more questions? All right, well, thank you so much. Ryan, we look forward to hearing what the next steps are after tonight. All right, so number two, discussion that is necessary about Lauren Layton, Silicon Parks and Recreation, Special Event Corps, and a license application regarding special events in various locations for fiscal year 25 and to waive the $50 maintenance license. Hey, Lauren.
Hey. We're just basically coming here, our annual ask to present various events at various locations that we manage, and we try to make it easy on you and just ask one time once a year if we can, and then if something else comes up, then obviously we'll, we'll come back to the drawing board and ask you for permission to do so.
So this is for all special events, right?
Yes, and I submitted separate applications for each type of event. So this is for Food Truck Friday, Fall Festival for next year, so we planned from this October through next October.
Great.
It works, but I tell you, my kids really enjoy that Food Truck Friday, and I think the little freedom I give them out there too.
It's a good place to run.
You guys have any more questions for?
Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Number three, discussion that is necessary to set a public hearing relating to Mrs. Abatement for rezoning 3209 and 3211, solidity highway from MX-2, limited excuse district to B2, general business district, and property located on Cully Road owned by Josh Taylor from AG-2, general agriculture district to RT-1-0, Lotline Residential District for November 7, 2024. And we're just, um.
It's not for nuisance payment, it's just for rezoning of those properties, you remember from the plan?
Uh, yes. All right, and we're just setting that public hearing, right?
Okay.
Are y'all have any questions on that? Number four, discussion that is necessary about Corporal Angela Tate to apply for Alzheimer's Foundation of American Project Life Saver International Grant. There is no match for this grant. Hey, Angela, how are you tonight?
I'm all right. How are y'all?
Good.
Um, I'm here asking, I've taken over the Project Life Saver program, and what it is, is I have paperwork that I sent with the pocket for y'all to see. It's the bracelets that we do for children or adults, it doesn't matter what age it is, with cognitive disorders that wander and stuff. And they have a bracelet that has a frequent, radio frequency that we can use an antenna and be able to locate them a lot faster.
Was that part of, I know I did Citizens Police Academy, I think I learned about that when I did that a couple years ago. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, so I went and got the instructor certification and everything, so we'll get a lot more people certified. What I'm asking is to be able to apply for grants so that we can be able to fund it through them and donations and sponsors and stuff.
And the people that need these, these bracelets are provided to them at no cost to these people, right?
At times, yes. You can charge them, but we don't, so.
Do we have to have a membership to the Alzheimer's Foundation to apply for the grant?
Not by, that I know of, and it's a, you don't have to match the fund or anything. The only thing that we do is we go through ALEA, they have sponsored us, is basically what it is. And I went to the conference just last month and everything for Project Life Saver.
Any more questions for?
I'm good. Thanks, thank you. Absolutely.
All right, number five, a section that is necessary by Interpol Police Chief Rondell Hughes regarding rescinding Resolution Number 30-20, authorizing summon sins in lieu of arrest in accordance with the fourth supplement State of Emergency Proclamation issued by Governor Kate Ivey on March 26, 2020. Hello, how are you tonight?
How are you? How you doing? Uh, what that entails is, back when COVID first hit, the metro jail shut down, so we couldn't take anybody to jail. So we issued a summons on, based upon her emergency proclamation, so this is just the recent.
You guys have any questions on this?
Have we gone back, I mean, I know we've gone back to taking them to jail, so is this just something that is basically marking through the paperwork saying we no longer have that?
That's correct.
Um, to where we're not taking them to jail?
That's, well, that's correct, just to get it off the books, because we are taking them to jail.
Just crossing our teeth and down our eyes.
That's correct.
So you can just stay at the podium and make the next few items are yours. Okay, discussion that is necessary about Interpol Police Chief Rondell Hughes regarding block safety camera agreement for the Silicon Police Department totaling $69,500.
Again, I'm asking y'all to give the mayor permission to sign the contract. I have already previously explained to you what they were, and like I said, we need them here to help control crime.
And was this a part of our capital list again?
Yes.
That you guys come back and just let us know when you arrange, okay? Any questions on the block cameras, guys?
Was this, you were gonna, you were gonna phase them at one point and buy them two separate times, but with this capital purchase item, is it all yours?
What I did was, I was gonna buy the first initial ten, and I was able to get eleven for the price of ten by Little Haggery, uh, to, from you guys, and then we applied for a grant of ten more.
Gotcha, okay. Have you already applied for the grant?
Yes, you gave permission to do that.
All right, and thanks for letting us know that you'd be haggling with us, we appreciate that.
I haggle with everybody.
All right, the next item is yours as well. Discussion that is necessary by Interpol Police Chief Rondell Hughes regarding the uniform replacement due to damages.
Okay, the, the humidifier has been fixed. We have not moved back into the room yet initially, and I, I don't know if you still have it with you, but it essentially came down to $14,000 for needs, $46,000 and some change for replace all.
And we just had, we just needed to decide what we wanted to do?
Yes.
So, yeah, guys, I don't know if you guys remember that list, it was, when now, it was the things that were damaged. Um, due to the water damage downstairs, like you said, the humidifier is fixed. Of course, we have to get the necessities, again, that's the 14,000, but to replace everything that was lost, it was 40?
Forty-six, I got it.
We just need to get the necessities?
Yeah, and that's what I think, so I think we need to buy the necessities, and then maybe we can just plan to just stock back up as needed.
That's right, or if you run into a van or something, like everybody, you just have to come and say, hey, I gotta have some more or something.
Good enough?
All right, are you guys on board? We're just getting the, um.
Just the necessities.
And what's that total? Is the, do we have to put that in? Is that on here for tonight or next time?
You don't remember that? He has with the blank.
To fill in?
To fill in a house.
Okay, so you'll have to, um.
$14,500, $4.29.
It's $25,000, Council agenda.
You said $25,000?
Nah, we're not, $25,000.
You said $14,500?
$4.29.
$14,000. Ah, it's there. So I just have to make sure I read this one out. Okay, the next one is yours. Uh, any more questions on this, or we do it on number seven? Okay, number eight, discussion by Interpol Police Chief Rondell Hughes to declare, to declare one block model 17 fire on as surplus property to present to retired officers as a token of the city of Silicon's appreciation for their favorable service. Resolution Number 136-2024.
Officer Chris Wachoff retired September 27th, so we would like to present his gun and his badge to him as been previously done historically.
And this is just a common practice, and I think this is something that we would like to do. Do you guys agree?
Yes.
All right, so number nine is yours as well. Discussion that is necessary by Interpol Police Chief Rondell Hughes to purchase four, 2024, four F-150 Supercruise, four by fours totaling $370,829.8. Funding from Capitol.
And like I said previously, when we discussed this, this is what, um, what, what we need to get our take-home program into effect. Now, did each of, did each of you see the letters I placed in front of you before?
I got. Is this back for a minute?
YF-150s, did you, did you, were you able to look at that?
Yeah.
Okay, I was able to get these trucks at a huge discount. The reason I was able to get them, because I have, uh, this year 24 trucks where everybody's trying to get 25s. So the regular price of an Explorer is around $49,000. I was able to get these trucks for 40 cents, okay?
Too many reasons, floor cheaper than the ones you got.
Cheaper than what I got. And, uh, cost effective on gas. Also, it gives more room in the back for transport. Now, I have a nine-to-miles list, I showed it to you last time, of everything that goes in one. When I outfit one of these vehicles, anybody, no matter what you're going to get in it and work, it's not for outfitted just for one person.
And this includes the battery, which?
It's includes the batteries, which, and you will be glad to know, they have been installed in the other ones. Beginning today, no island.
One more, one more.
Cause you.
One more thing, so how long can you leave it off, again?
Two hours.
But you said that these four are gonna cost 37?
That's with everything. That's getting it, uh, 800 radios is $14,000. Government direct in-car cameras is $59,000. Pinnacle tablet computers is $15,000. Stocker radar units is $15,000. Bed covers for the bags from the shop, $2,400. Window tint, $800. Stock dicks, $2,400. Graphics, $3,600. Uh, install graphics, $1,100. Vaults in the back, guns, weapons, all that, $6,000. The trucks themselves, $187,000. And to put lights on all four, $16,000.
Man, that gets you all the back end accessories, that's more than the truck.
I was curious, how are these branded labels, is it stealth or off-the-earth or loud?
No, they're, you can see them. We, I got rid of the ghost package. You'll be able to see it during the day, and at night it still glows. Matter of fact, I changed the, uh, I changed the design, and if you, have you seen an SRO truck?
Yeah.
Do you like it?
Yeah, I like it.
I do too.
Was that crazy, or was it not wrapped differently? Did it change when it went to get lights on and stuff?
The SRO truck?
Right.
Actually, the SRO truck doesn't have enough lights, so I've gone back to fix that.
Well, I mean, wasn't it wrapped?
But, uh, it's out of Bayside Graphics out of, uh, Foley, Alabama, and it is wrapped, but once it's, it's.
I guess that's more crazy, because I thought I saw it and it was wrapped like Foley, like, had neat designs on the side. You might as new contact.
The light matter, he didn't, very much. But so far, I've had nothing, but, uh, from the citizens of Silicon, they love the way it looks, and it extends to Marvel City, that's who we are.
That's right.
I got a couple, um, I got a question, a couple of questions. Is this also a part of our capital that has already been approved?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Um, it is part of the package, um, for capital that you all approved, how it was priced, which he did state when we talked about capital, was only $310,000. But he did tell you guys when we were doing this, that the quotes were expiring and the prices were gonna go up because we are gonna do this one year.
So it's a difference of $60,000?
For the same equipment, the prices just went up like eggs and milk.
What, what is our, um, what is our balance in capital?
After all of this, um, is going to be $500,000.
Okay, so, um, is that, after, when you say all of this, after the police cars or after everything we do tonight?
Everything that you approved at, um, budget.
Okay, so.
Everything.
So this has been approved except $60,000?
Renewal price difference, yes.
Yeah, so there, so that's when we have to decide if we're okay with?
What made it go up 60?
The quote expired.
Okay.
I also got a question, um, the Mrs. Abatement card, it's like an unmarked card. I, um, and this is just me alone, one person, I just feel some type of way about that card not being marked.
Well.
I think for safety reasons, shouldn't it, um, say, you know, Silicon Police and Mrs. Abatement when they're going out on site?
Well, um, it's kinda like our black Explorers administrative cars, they're not marked either. Only difference is, is this truck is white and not black. It has public safety equipment on it. Uh, matter of fact, Officer Coleman during, when we had the school threats, stopped privacy's cars at Congress School, even though they expect to see a white Dodge truck with the lights going on.
I know, but what, I guess when I think about Mrs. Abatement, it is, you know, sometimes it can be kinda dangerous, and that's the whole reason why we have a police officer to enforce it, but shouldn't that car, like, say what it is? Like, say who he is when he's pulling up to a scene?
That ain't a bad, that, that, I see what you're saying. That ain't a bad, I didn't, you know.
Striking it like the others, such as.
Yeah, but, and then even if it says Mrs. Abatement, I'm just saying, you know, I could be wrong.
If that's what you want, that's what we'll do.
Well, it's, it's just me, I don't know.
But how much would it be just to do it?
Everything else is on there, it's just the striking it.
Yeah, just put uses on it, on what's on it, I could do that.
Well, we certainly know how, how much it is. I mean, everybody.
I had to get close.
And we can talk about it in the next council, next council, but.
Okay, yeah. So what about the $60,000? Are we good with, um, let's leave our review, everything except the $60,000, does the price change?
That's a lot, but yeah, I guess.
And then it's still, it's just with the balance of what you said.
That's right.
All right. Okay. Number 10, I think that's it for you, um.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So last item of the work session is a discussion that is necessary by City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding adjusting the compensation for the city prosecuting attorney, public defender, and part-time residing municipal judge for the municipal court. And this is something we went over in budget time, remember guys? So we've already, um, talked about this and agreed to this, so I don't know if you have any more questions?
I did, just so you know, I did send all the resolutions to Judge Ford last week before the read ads went out. He made minor changes, but he was fine with it. He just asked me to let y'all know that we did coordinate, um, last week.
But we have the final in our supporting, that's the final?
Yeah, yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, so any questions on anything else as far as the work session agenda? All right, so I'll go over the, um, the things that are going to be considered for tonight. So we have, um, action that is necessary, um, to approve an automobile allowance for the fire chief. We got action to approve purchasing procedures and rescinding of, um, purchasing policy.
Are we gonna discuss number one?
Um.
I'd like to.
I would too.
Okay, well, that's fine. You want me to stop right here?
No, go ahead and read all of them.
Yeah, you can read all.
Yeah, we can discuss it.
Okay.
All right, so number three, action that is necessary to approve resolution for the, um, the compensation for the municipal court. Public defender, action that is necessary to, um, approve resolution for Acusa Valley Medical Center. We already talked about that. So action that is, um, necessary to approve resolution, adjusting compensation amount for the, um, public defender again. This is one of those things we already talked about during budget. Action that is necessary to approve, adjust compensation for Matt West prosecuting attorney. Action that is necessary to adjust compensation for, um, court judge, Taylor Park. Action that is necessary to approve the rezoning, and this one is to, um, yeah, for the public hearing. I'm trying not to read all of it, so I'm trying to skim through hopefully, um, unless y'all want me to read all of it. Action that is necessary, um, to set another, um, public hearing. Action that is necessary to approve, it says, uniform guidelines for the city of Silicon. Action that is necessary to approve or authorize summons in lieu of arrest. The resolution we need to rescind that was due to COVID. Action that is necessary to, um, approve a contract for engineering services as far as the new aquatic center and the Oakville site. Action that is necessary to approve, um, uh, surplus property for, um, the police officer who was hired handgun. Action that is necessary to approve, approve the police department to buy the new trucks. Action that is necessary to approve police department to apply for the Alzheimer's Foundation, um, grant. Action that is necessary to approve the police department to replace uniforms due to damages, and we're gonna do the $14,504, is that right?
Right, yes.
All right, action that is necessary to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the block, um, safety camera agreement. Action that is necessary to, uh, uh, so this is, that is necessary to, um, take home vehicles to include all of the following positions. And I'll go ahead and read this when I read this whole thing. Action that is necessary to authorize the use of take-home vehicles to include all of the following positions. Police chief, police captain, police lieutenant, police investigator, K-9 unit school resource officer, street superintendent, assistant street superintendent, and shop superintendent effective October 1. And I guess this is part of the thing that we're gonna discuss. And action that is necessary to accept Mayor's, um, Mayor Hollis' recommendation to appoint a new police chief. Action that is necessary to approve parking rents recreation host of, um, various events for fiscal year 25. All right, so.
Order careful.
Go first, please, yes.
So with number one, send the ordinance and give him, you know, Chief Osgood the, the money, the 250. Um, I think he'll tell you as well, that's not as important as having a vehicle. I'm not saying he take home a command vehicle every time, but a vehicle that allows him to respond and come back with lights to, you know, run code or whatever back when he's needed, when he's off, when he's out of town, when he's home, and to come back to Silicon when he's needed. I think, if you look down here, we just gave everybody all these positions, the ability to take home a vehicle, but we're taking away the ones that were already in the fire department. That just, that doesn't seem fair to me, as him being the chief, he was hired under that pretense that he gets the vehicle to take home, and we chose, you know, after negotiation, we chose.
He wasn't hired under that, I just wanna put that.
Yes, but we fixed, we gave an option, and he took away the 250 and chose to take the car, and we all agreed to it. I just, me personally, don't feel like taking that back. I think he deserves to have a car to take home. Again, it can be a different car, but he still needs a take-home vehicle.
And I also wanna follow that up about the fire inspector who came back twice last week for fires, and he, he needs a vehicle as well. I feel like we're playing favorites and we're, we're taking away from. I feel like we're playing favorites and we're, we're taking away from people who need some type of, you know, way to get back. I think it's putting the city at risk for potential, you know, litigation if they're in an accident trying to respond and they don't have the proper lighting and stuff, and their personal vehicles as well. I, I think that there is a, just a big issue with this overall. I mean, also, then you look at the court department. Amber John, she's not mentioned anywhere in here, and she has to travel back and forth to the jail to do domestic violence hearings. And then, um, I mean, it, it's not fair, and then you take away building and codes vehicle as well. Like, I just don't understand it.
And these people too are working to and from work. They're stopping and doing jobs. I know like Mike mentioned to us before, he's stopping before he gets to city hall and after he leaves city hall for the day. And, uh, you know, he's stopping in, I mean, it's, it's something that's needed and we're taking away. It's like we're punishing them when they couldn't do a great job.
And we're killing morale and we're, you know, it kind of puts departments against each other as well. I mean, it, it's just not a good book and it's not fair to them. We want to have the best departments providing services to our citizens. And I think that we're just, we're killing morale completely by taking away.
In my, my opinion, you just strike number one and add, on eighteen, add, uh, inspector Mike, uh, the building service and fire chief back to the listed positions.
Here, is it my turn?
Yeah.
Here's my opinion. You know, I love Nate, Nate's a good boy. We all know where Nate lives, okay? Nate drives ninety-six miles a day, that's twenty thousand miles a year, that's five oil changes he's had. I was the swing boat, if we remember, when we bought this vehicle, because I was told about, me and Mayor Howard had had a conversation prior to that, that he was gonna drive something else. But the way the world is right now, the way that gas and oil and things have, um, increased, I think it's more cost efficient that we leave the agenda as is because Nate's not the only one that, uh, his vehicle would be, um, would be needing repaired. I mean, we're fixing to have to buy Mr. Mike, you know, vehicle also. And a lot of that is not because Mike lives a long way away, but Mike uses his a lot and Mike needs a new vehicle. He drives, I think he lives eleven, twelve hours. Me personally, and nobody in this room is gonna wanna hear this, and I'm not being ugly, I'm really not. I'm old Silicon because I was raised by a bunch of old Silicon people. If you're gonna be a department head, I think you ought to live in Silicon. Now, I know we probably wouldn't get a lot of department heads if we did that, but that's just my personal opinion. I think we leave the agenda as written because at this time, in our, where we are with budgets and where we are as a council, I think this is most cost efficient for the city if we leave it the way it is.
What about the investigator driving back through Etowah County? How is that fair to point out Nate Osgood's?
I, I, Miss Heath, I don't think it's a, uh, point out of Nate, but I don't think anybody's got anything against Nate.
But I'm saying if you use that problem of the mileage, you gotta look at the picture as a whole. You can't just single one department out. You gotta look at everybody that's driving.
I'm trying to respond to your question.
And I'm not finished talking and you're talking over me. I appreciate your order.
Okay, alright, guys. So, everybody has said how they feel. Lee, do you have anything to say? I don't have anything to add, so, everybody said everything they wanted to say, right?
If we're on the subject of, um, stipend or whatever you wanna call it, the two fifty, I think that needs to be adjusted as well. Those are very old numbers, the two fifty for allowance or whatever you wanna call it, this miniscule amount.
I think that that's, that's not fair. And what about, again, we have Amber Johns, nothing was addressed about her being a department head that has to travel?
Amber is, we've already addressed that Amber's doing the budget, Amber's getting mileage.
But just from city hall to the courthouse, right? That's what she's always got?
No, she, she gets mileage, every time she has to do city business, that was already addressed during budget.
Okay, I just want to make sure we stick with that.
Adjusting the allowance would make sense.
Yeah, I, I don't mind adjusting the allowance. But are we gonna adjust it for everyone or would you, how are we gonna do this?
But what about the fire inspector? He has to come back every time there's a fire.
I thought he only, like, when he could get in the house, he went to inspect.
Well, he, he...
So Alex, I think, I think we can agree about adjusting the amount, so how would we, how would we come up with a fix?
Um, we'd have to discuss the amount in the work session. Who's getting it, who's not? I don't think we need to, to do it off the cuff here as far as...
So just put on Nick, we could do an inflation-based adjustment.
And then just come up with the amount.
I believe the two fifty, Tiffany's got that, and then with his own, from nineteen seventy-four.
It is in... So when, when would he get it? Wanna make sure he gets the total amount, when does he get it? Because I think they also tax that too, right?
Yes, it is taxed. Um, a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and some change, um, and he gets it after the tax. So, it's the second pay period, probably is the second one there.
Okay. And that'll be, um, that'll be after our next meeting?
Um, we have an effective date on this agenda.
No, no, he's still, it is still, he can still get it in October though.
But still get the, are we talking the two fifty?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about adjusting.
Yes.
So we have another meeting to...
We do, we have another meeting on October seventh, then. But you guys will have to discuss the amount as a whole.
Can we call him on, we can call you on the phone, because you won't be here the seventeenth of October, will you?
I mean, it's fine, we'll just discuss it with you. I mean, I think we wanna make sure you have a fair amount.
Okay. Well, where do we wanna take it to?
She's to take, again, I've already applied inflation adjustments since he was...
What she comes up with, she comes up with.
Did you hear that, Alex?
Yes, sir, thank you.
What about the inspector? Nate, what?
I'd like to make a comment on the fire inspector, and obviously y'all are, y'all are gonna do what you're gonna do with fire team ordeal, but the, the fire inspectors also are hired investigators. He, he, he wears two hats, and that's what his job description is. And, and so all of the same justifications for a police investigator who's on call taking a vehicle also apply to him. And, and as Laura mentioned, just last week, we had fires where he had to come back after hours to do investigations, after hour investigations. So regardless of what you're gonna do with me, he needs to be considered to be placed on the list of eligible positions because he, he, he does do that.
Okay, I, I don't think we understood that fully, Nate.
So we're also, so there's also a couple of people in the police department that are losing their cars, do you want, you wanna talk about those as well?
Who's losing their cars in the PD?
Um, the... I think it's the missing abatement and, uh, the trans emergency.
Yeah, are you good with those? You just wanna talk about the fire department?
I mean, I think that, I don't think it's fair that y'all are taking any vehicles, to be honest with you, but I think that they deserve them as well. I mean, we can't say, you know, about the mileage with one and not look at mileage for everybody.
But we also, we also don't pay people to come to work, you know, Laura.
But it helps retain...
Don't pay people to come to work, yes we do. And then as far as building services, I mean, Mike had over that, you know, I'm not trying to put anybody's name over, they're, they have a department head. They make their schedule, they know how and when they're gonna have to have the things that they have to do. So you have to take enough time to come to work so you can get in the city vehicle and then go on site.
Can I say something for Mike? Sometimes we have to come up and do...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Harmony.
And I know you don't understand a lot...
But Harmony, I'm speaking...
He got the standard, he...
But he asked and we allowed it, but I'm, I'm talking.
Well, I'm telling you.
But I'm, I'm talking.
So, that's one aspect that he's...
Harmony, I'm gonna ask, if you can't speak in terms, then you'll have to leave. Yeah.
There, Fred, and we will recognize her later, I appreciate it.
I will, I don't mind recognizing anybody, but I would like to be respected when I am speaking. I wanna make sure everybody's recognized, that everybody gets a chance to speak when it's time to speak, if that's okay there. That's good, Harmony? Okay, so what I was saying is, they, they make their schedule. How, how far does he even, the way you're saying, we consider mileage? When people have to come to work, and that's just like me, I know I have to go to work, if I have something to do at work that's gonna start a little bit early, I have to get up earlier so I can be in work in time to make it to the site. We shouldn't be letting everybody take cars home because it's convenient. That's not what the cars are for. They're to do city business, not to make everybody's, you know, lives convenient.
Well, on that aspect too, Tiffany, like you mentioned, I think we got the point with the fire investigator. But with Nate, he's not coming out, he's not coming here just to come here, he's coming here after hours for an emergency, run code or whatever the case may be, he's not coming to show up. So that, that's another reason why he needs a take-home vehicle.
Alright, Harmony, you wanna get up and say what you were saying now?
Okay, sure. Um, you know, so, we obviously don't know ahead of time is, uh, within, within a reasonable time. We know they're gonna pour concrete, right? We don't know when these businesses or these residents start getting these money to do. So it's just like, we don't know when fires are happening, we don't know when investigations are gonna be done, so we can't plan ahead. Okay, well, I'm gonna have to do it for thirty in next week because there's gonna be a fire.
So you're saying that in...
Understand that aspect of it?
Not with building services, I don't. I don't with building services, so you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to elaborate a little bit more. So with buildings...
Sometimes it's building outside, right?
Uh-huh.
Concrete sets up in ways, okay? Sometimes we're gonna have to come in at five o'clock in the morning. I don't know that, you know, maybe three weeks at a time. I don't know that for like, maybe like the next day. Sometimes they have to pour concrete that day because there's gonna be a little bit of sunshine, a little rain. So we don't necessarily know all the time when that's gonna happen, just like, oh, my fire's gonna come, you don't know if the shooting's...
I know, but we're talking about building services though. To me, that doesn't make any sense, though.
Concrete is part of building services, right?
I know, concrete is part of building services, but you're saying if some sun is out that day, we're gonna pour concrete, but shouldn't we already be at work that day to where we can get in the car and drive to the site?
At eight o'clock in the morning?
We should have known that. I just, I just find that, I don't know, I don't work in building services, I just find that hard to believe. So, do we have any more questions on this?
I just think it's a bad idea. And it's putting departments against each other and it's killing morale.
But how is it putting departments against each other? That's what I'm not understanding.
Because that's...
But if the council decides to do something, you can't blame, you can't blame employees for what the council decided to do.
But it's still, it's just gonna kill morale. I, I just think it's a bad idea.
So where are we taking, I guess, number, um, on the agenda? The list of people, number eighteen?
Eighteen.
So this is just authorizing who can take them home, everybody else that used to take them home, no longer takes them home?
Yes, that's what we said. And as far as the fire inspector, if they, and Nate, you said he does have to respond each time there's a fire, fire. So there, anytime there's a fire, he has to be on scene right then, that's what you're saying?
In the immediate aftermath, anytime there's a significant fire that requires a cause and origin investigation, he responds back to do that. He, he has all certifications to do fire causing investigation, determine where it started, what started it, why it started, if it was said intentionally or if it's accidental, all of those factors that go into that aspect of our job. It can't necessarily wait until the next day because that type of, um, that type of, um, evidence can, can deteriorate or go away if it's not examined and looked at and investigated right then and immediate aftermath of the fire.
I got you. Thanks, Nate.
Did you add that?
I did.
Okay.
Actually, I can, I can get on a little bit, just not the, um, command center. Now, that is...
Well, in all, natural disasters, yes, but like these floodings and the bad weather we've been having and all that, you've gotta have your street shops, certain tenant on site, they're pretty much on call twenty-four seven, they gotta come in and out.
Yeah, there is still shit in here.
So does the chief have to come in. He needs to be in when there's a big flood, when there's his man out there. Somebody has to come in and run the station if they're outrunning calls twenty-four seven. He sometimes has to come in, help out there and all that.
I know, well, hopefully with him being so far away, hopefully we have a team in place that helps and...
We hired him, but y'all hired him knowing he lived where he lives. I don't understand why it's an issue five years later.
But in the ordinance, it does say, we hired him saying that he would not get a take-home vehicle, he would get the two hundred and fifty dollars in money. I have that in front of me.
But we're not consistent, we take it. We take what we give and then we take away. It's so inconsistent.
I know. But again, like Lee was saying and Ashley mentioned, now, I, I could get on board with the car with some lights, but that, not the command center. I feel that...
We brought you, and we just agreed that it's not the command vehicle, it's supposed to be...
Yeah, but not, yeah. The command center, it was hired for, it was, it was purchased to serve the city of Silacogu, and it needs to be in town to, so it can be used for the city of Silacogu.
Sure, if we go that route, we still need to add fire to number eighteen to have a take-home.
But not, we're not, not a brand-new vehicle and not the command center, that's what I'm saying.
That, that's fine, but it's a take-home vehicle, it's eighteen, if you add his man, it doesn't specify which kind.
He said, yeah, he's saying add it to the... That's what I was just gonna say.
Why did this suddenly become an issue again? Like, I don't know where this came from.
Laura, we don't know where a lot of stuff come from. We've been trying to solve many issues like this, little problems, knee-deep in, you know, what, trying to figure it out.
So we add him to the take-home, all the people?
Yeah, but not the command center.
But then we don't, um, go through with number one?
Tiffany, they're trying to get your attention.
Y'all keep talking about the command vehicle. I'm a captain here, I'm not using his vehicle. That is not made for me, that is made for him.
But he can use it when he's here.
I understand that, that he may be at home or somewhere else having a meeting and need to come back in, and he needs that command vehicle. That is not for me to use. I have everything I need in my truck that I can...
And he can operate that command center from wherever he is.
And, and I don't understand this either. The, there's admins and stuff in the PD, I don't know. There's admins in the PD.
Okay, Harmony, that, that's your last time, that's, that's your last time being disrespectful. I'm listening to him. But that's, that's your last time being disrespectful to me. I mean, I, I sit up here, I try to respect everybody, I try to give everybody a chance to talk, you know, y'all...
I think what it is...
On Scott's, sorry Nate, on Scott's point is, it doesn't matter if that vehicle's sitting here, that the personnel, correct me if I'm wrong, the personnel are assigned to specific vehicles in a room, so it wouldn't be used if it's sitting here.
Ashton, we understand that. So let me say this, we understand that, I understand what Scott's saying, I understand what you're saying, but understand what we're saying. With, the numbers that we have is not cost effective for that vehicle to go a hundred miles every day. So we're here to compromise, so we can get on board with him driving another vehicle or we can give him the site. So which one, that's, that's what we're gonna decide. So we're either gonna go through with number one and give him an allowance or we can get on board with him driving another car that has lights on it. I think that's fair.
Are we gonna do the others that are driving?
I, that's, I think that's fair.
I, I, that's what you, that's what you come up with, taking something home that's got lights so he can run code home. So, I, I mean, I can get on board with that. I can get on board with either one of them.
Can you get on board with that, Laura?
I can, but I still think that we should put the same, you know, in place for anybody else that's driving further than a certain mileage.
Is that, are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna agree to give him a car with the lights and stuff on it, just not the command center?
Sure.
Are we gonna give him the, um, go along with that one?
I, I'd like to.
Ashton?
We, we gotta scratch number one, we think that's gotta be the way.
Yeah, I, I agree horribly.
And we need to have a way of determining in number eighteen, for these, these positions, what kind of cars, if you have a car that's authorized.
Exactly.
That will require further discussion.
That'll be fine.
And I think that we're still, you know, the building and code department, I think we need to reconsider that as well.
So should we take it off until we specify the type of vehicles they're taking home?
Yeah.
I don't think...
Obviously, there's only one type in the police department, but others have to specify.
I don't think we need to take it off. I think we're in agree is that he's willing to take a car home so that he can respond to emergencies, but the command vehicle will stay in somebody.
Yep. I'm still trying to find it on the agenda, guys.
It's number twenty-five, and I keep going, and we did, and Nate, we did add the fire inspector. You hear me, Nate? We did add the fire inspector.
It's number twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six.
Alright, so let me write it down. So do we want to go right something specific? So? So do you want to say it back?
Yeah, we need to go through each. What are we gonna do when it comes time though for the police to take home vehicles as a department, as most departments in the area do? Are we going to allow that? Because I mean, I know that Ron Nelson's been trying to build fleet to be able to offer that.
They have to have a take home policy first.
Well, I mean, I know that, but are we? I mean, is that out of the picture now or is that still a possibility in the future?
It's still, anything's a possibility. They will have to put a take home vehicle policy in place, there's not one in place right now. So once that gets put in place and is presented to the council, we'll deal with that then. All right, so we got this done. So we're not gonna do number one, right? And we got the stuff added to number twenty-six.
I still don't think it's fair we're giving the city clerk a stop and a not, at least the other, um-
Isn't that like state law or something, um?
I couldn't find it.
All right, so is there anything else on the work session agenda?
Can we go over the wording of whatever y'all changed since we can't hear nothing over here?
All right, so this is what I, so this is what it's gonna say. Action that is necessary to authorize the use of take home vehicles to include only the following positions. Police chief, police captain, police lieutenant, police investigator, K-9 units through a resource office, street superintendent, assistant street superintendent, fire inspector, fire chief. And all for, and all these should be approved vehicles for approved take home vehicles. Effective October 1, 2024. Ah, I look at shot shoot just right there.
Okay, so modification in the beginning would be approved take home vehicles.
All right, so please.
What about the, I mean, we're leaving certain department heads out. I just don't think it's fair.
We add, um, add, goodness gracious. Building and services department head in there? Do you have a list of names?
I don't think so.
No, I'm, I'm good with what we've got right here.
Cause in my mind, Harmony, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll do that. Say we add police, uh, building and services department head. You at least have one person you know that can go before work afterwards to address a certain matter.
Contractors make their hours, we pay or take their hours.
Right, but if you have one person, say, say you don't have a take home car, but Mike does, then that makes-
At least, at least the contractor rounds to pick up the picture, this is since contractors make their hours.
That was my problem.
And he's had it, Mike has had to go out on the weekend when the police went up to the same, yeah, to cut utilities.
Five or sometimes, like, you know, structural collapse situations, you know, all that.
I mean, he's come out, I know there was a place in my district that he came out on a Sunday to have-
I can speak to that too. Anytime we have a vehicle versus a building accident, where, where a car wrecks and hits a, hits a building and there's any kind of structural instability, he's one of the first people I call. You know, especially if it's a commercial building, which oftentimes they wind up being, it's just how the, how things crumbles. You know, we, we have to call them out there to make sure it's still safe for, for the public to be in the building.
Just like, you know, what happens with armies and D-ones.
Yeah.
Okay. What's, what's your wording gonna say?
So it says action that is necessary to authorize approved take home vehicles to include-
Approved.
Yeah.
Did you get it out?
No sir, I can't hear anything y'all are saying.
Really?
Really, just you, I'm sorry, just you.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so action that is necessary to authorize the use of approved take home vehicles to include only the following positions. And what we added was fire inspector and fire chief. So the cars need to be, which take home vehicles need to be approved.
You can approve them for the meeting minutes?
Um, please, please, thank you. Yeah. And also too, I think we need to know like who's assigned what as well. So once we get a list of who's already assigned what, and then we need to know who's gonna get assigned.
We can approve by some department or any issue.
Yeah, well, I'm telling, I can't get on board with the command center at all. I don't know how y'all feel.
Okay. Um, does the, does the building services department, for example, have a vehicle? Or is that the vehicle that Mike drives?
Um, we have two vehicles. I don't know how that's, how that's like that. I just know he has some people that he drives and there's several people that I drive to my, especially if I go to.
So go with me here. In cases where there is an occasional need for use by an employee of a vehicle to meet a contractor early or something, rather than have a permanent take home vehicle, wouldn't it be possible for the employee to check out the department vehicle, a department vehicle to use for a meeting the next morning or for some scheduled weekend something, where it's not a permanent take home, it's an as needed take home?
That's fine with y'all.
I think, but I think you were saying you would know when you would need it. Isn't that what you just said?
Sometimes, sometimes yes, sometimes no. Like I said, it just depends on what the weather's gonna happen, the money cash flows, supply chain, stuff like that. You don't necessarily know, sometimes you know, sometimes you don't. So sometimes we can get a call at like 3:30 in the afternoon and you have to go concrete at five minutes a month.
And so you can just check out the vehicle, take it home and start the next one?
Does that make sense? Does that make sense to me? Does that make sense to you?
So that could be a separate policy, if necessary, or just an assumption that there's a department vehicle that can be checked out by employees as necessary as authorized by the department head.
But it's not an everyday take home?
But it's not an everyday take home.
I think that idea.
Now, if you wanna go on that too, we can talk about overtime hours for, you know, that's gonna be a problem. I don't know if that works out.
Why would you get-
Should be overtime.
Why would you get overtime instead of, why wouldn't it be overtime?
I don't know, I don't know where it's at.
She, she would get overtime and she comes over.
Yeah, it should, I mean, if you work the hours-
I'm just saying like if we, you know, if that's something that happens, you know, out of the hot person, you can be-
So are you not, are you not being paid now when you go in early or late, when you work late? Are you not being on the clock? Are you not being compensated for your time now? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, I'm just saying, I don't know what kind of laws you're going to apply.
There's, you just get overtime. If it's over the hours, you get paid, you're on the clock.
Is there also a reason that we might wanna consider for the, for the magistrate having access to a city vehicle to transport rather than having to use a personal vehicle?
I don't think she does. I think Amber uses a city vehicle to transport. They don't transport in their own car. But anytime she uses her own car for anything she has to do, yeah.
To get into possession.
She makes sure she just turning her mileage up. She's compensated for her, her time and her gas.
How does she transport?
But I'm just, but it, it doesn't have to transport.
She, she's not transporting inmates. She's having to go up there and do the, like-
But what are you saying?
Hearing.
If it was, if she was to have to, nobody's gonna transport anybody in their own car.
But she's still putting wear and tear mileage on hers to go run the board.
Yeah, that's what mileage is for. It compensates you for your time, your gas and the wear and tear in your car. Okay, so are we good to, um, end the work session now? All right, so we're gonna end the work session and we're gonna start the, um, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Do a roll call vote. Laura Brolin, Lee Herrmann, Nate Brewer, Nate, um, Ashton Fowler.
Here.
All here. Invitation was provided by Ron Olman and will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. It is a good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the principle would be to maintain the justice of all.
Mayor Hobbie, you have a report for us tonight?
Just a couple of things, Madam President. Get an update on our vacancies throughout the city. Administrator and finance has one vacancy. The animal shelters does not have any vacancies. Building service does not have any vacancies. Municipal court has one vacancy and the fire department has two. Chief, I think you said you had three, didn't you? So that's three. Get this thing open. Uh, police department, you're showing seven. Street department still has three vacancies. And shop department has one vacancy. All these positions are being advertised for. Uh, over the weekend, uh, those of you who passed Noble Park, Kim told me they had some pretty close to 300 people in the park camping out with the Pen Hody Trail. And from the tower all the way to the Pen Hody Trail, there's almost 3,000 people who took part in that. And also this coming weekend, we got, uh, the Talladega Race coming up, so the police will be kinda busy. And also, Gold Jangles opened up today. And we wanted to thank them. They gave the Board of Education $2,500 check. They will be an asset to our community and hope that y'all will take the time to visit them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hobbie. I need a motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
I'm making a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Also too, I think number nine, we're taking it off, right? Under new business, number nine on the agenda?
Yep.
All right, so we're gonna-
And you changed the, uh, number eighteen.
So should we have amended it?
That's okay because it wasn't adopted until you just adopted it.
All right, all right, sounds good. All right, next item on the agenda. I need a, um, I need a motion to approve the minutes, um, of this special work session held September 9th, 2024.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Next item, I need a motion to approve the minutes of this special work session held September 11th, 2024.
I have something I wanna add to that. It said that Philip Morris was here and addressed the council and he was not.
In the minutes of that?
Yes, they did.
On the 11th?
Yes. Is that the very bottom?
Can you just remove that number?
I think we're gonna have to amend those minutes.
Can we remove it? No, we're probably gonna have to look at it, we go.
All right, so just make sure it's on the Sep-, on the October 17th, um, meeting. So this is moved to 10/17. Thanks Laura. All right. Number old business, we're on to new business. Again, we'll remove number nine. To number 10, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 100-2024 purchasing procedures and rescind resolution number 2-98 purchasing, purchasing policy. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 100-2024 into the meeting minutes.
Nothing changed, just don't be greedy.
Okay, do you guys have, um, we're good with her? All right, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Number 11, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 107-2024 to amend resolution number 66-2024, adjust compensation amount for Austin Smith, public defender for the municipal court. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 107-2024 into the meeting minutes. If there's anything additional to add.
Nothing changed.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 111-2024, fiscal year 25, Courser Valley Medical Center funding tolling $520,755. Include $25,000 for construction modification to the existing space to be reimbursed from the general fund. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 111-2024 into the meeting minutes. If there's anything to add.
Nothing changed.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
I heard Lee first. Second?
Second.
Nate Brewer, all in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Action that is necessary to approve resolution number 115-2024 to amend resolution number 85-2020 to adjust compensation amount for Dean McConaughn, public defender for the municipal court. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 115-2024 into the meeting minutes. If there's anything additional to add.
Nothing changed.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Okay, approved. Action that is necessary to approve resolution number 117-2024 to amend resolution number 08-2021 to adjust compensation amount for Matt West, city prosecuting attorney for the municipal court. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 117-2024 into the meeting minutes. If there's anything to add.
Nothing changed.
I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Laura, second?
Second.
Action, all in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Approved. Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 129-2024 to amend resolution number 32-2023 to adjust compensation amount for Taylor, a far, it's part time, it's part, part time presiding municipal judge for the municipal court. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 129-224 into the meeting minutes. If there's anything additional to add. Okay, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Next item on the agenda, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 130-2024, authorizing a public hearing for rezoning 3209 and 3211 Talladega Highway from MX2, that's limited mixed use district to B2, that's general business district on November 7th, 2024. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 130-2024 into the meeting minutes. If there's anything additional to add to this hour. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Action first. All in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 131-2024, authorizing a public hearing for rezoning of property located on Holy Road owned by Josh Taylor from AG2, that's general agricultural district to RT1-0 lot line residential district on November 7th, 2024. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 131-2024 into meeting minutes. If there's anything additional to add. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion Laura?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, second?
Second.
Action, all in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Action that is necessary to approve resolution number 132-2024, establish uniform guidelines for the city of Silicaca and to rescind resolution number 14-2020 authorized work boots to be added as a part of the uniform required to be worn by street and shop department workers. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 132-2024 into the meeting minutes. If there's anything additional to add.
Nothing changed.
Okay, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I heard, um, Nate. All in favor?
Yay.
Any names? Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 134-2024 to rescind resolution number 30-2020 authorized summoning in lieu of arrest in accordance with the court supplemental state of emergency proclamation issued by Governor Kay Ivey on March 26th, 2020. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 134-2024 into the meeting minutes. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I heard Lee. All in favor?
Yay.
Any names?[1788.01] Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 135-2024 to amend resolution number 75-2024, contract for agricultural and engineering services with William Blackstock Architects for the Solocaga Recreation and Aquatic Center to include additional design services for the city of Solocaga's old municipal pool redevelopment. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 135-2024 into the meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
Amen.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 136-2024 to declare one block model seventeen firearm as surplus property to present to retiring officer as a token of the city of Solocaga's appreciation for their faithful service. City clerk treasured to read resolution number 136-2024 into the meeting minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
Amen.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 137-2024 for the police department to purchase four 2024 Ford F-150 Super Crew four by fours tolling $370,829.8 pricing plus equipment to be paid from Capital Reserve Improvement Fund. I need, if to consider at this meeting, I need this to be introduced by a council member?
I'll introduce.
If to take action at this meeting, I need a motion?
Motion.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, I need a second?
Second.
If you action?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Okay, since it's unanimous, I need a motion by a council member to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Nay.
Okay. No, Laura, no. Laura, four one.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number 138-2024 to authorize the mayor to sign the block safety camera agreement for the Solocaga Police Department tolling $69,500. Agreement for twenty-four months includes eleven licensed late recognition cameras with vehicle fingerprint technology and real-time alerts for unlimited users to be paid from Capital Reserve Improvement Fund. That's what I was wondering, is this late? Is this a license plate recognition? Alex, wanna make sure we, um, that word is spelled correctly and, uh? Alright, if to consider at this meeting, I need a, um, someone, a council member to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Okay. If, if action is to be taken at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Okay. Alright, it was unanimous, so I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Next item, action that is necessary to approve the police department to apply for the all-timeest foundation of American Private Life Saver International Grant. There is no match for this grant, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
I heard Lee. All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Next item, I, action that is necessary to approve the police department to replace uniforms due to damages not covered by insurance tolling $14,549.29. I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Okay, now I'll make sure I read this next one correctly. Next item, action that is necessary to authorize the use of approved take-home vehicles to include only the following positions: police chief, police captain, police lieutenant, police investigator, K-9 unit school resource officer, street superintendent, assistant street superintendent, shop superintendent, fire inspector, and fire chief effective October first, 2024. Did I cover everything?
Yep.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
I heard Lee first. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays? Okay, the next item, action that is necessary to accept Mayor's high-grade recommendation to appoint Rundell Hughes as police chief effective October one, 2024 at six PM, six PM at a grade of PBH Step Eleven. I need a motion by a council member?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, let it be known for the record that I do not have a vote in this. It is completely the council. Under the Alabama State Constitution, I cannot vote for a police chief.
Okay, we know you don't vote, but this is your recommendation, correct?
That's right.
Correct, Mayor? This is your recommendation, correct?
The recommendation was there.
Okay.
But the way it was worded sounded like it was your favorite my word for it. But anyway, I do not have a vote, that's the matter.
Okay, but this is your recommendation, right, Mayor? Alright, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Any nays?
One.
No, Laura, no.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. So, um, all yays, one, no. Four yays, one nay. Laura, no.
Laura, no?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright. Next item, action that is necessary to approve Solocaga Parks and Recreation to host various events at the various parks and waive the fifty-dollar special event license fee for fiscal year twenty-five, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion.
I heard Lee first, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yays.
Now, well, our business license clerk knows this, because after the Penhody Fest last week, it was not related to him that those people had this. We, I wanna make sure that he's aware when we pass this thing.
We talked to them, correct? Yeah, we talked to them.
He's aware.
Well, he went, like, he didn't know. He wasn't aware about the blanket, like, that we.
Well, they, we don't give it to them. This is just for our people that we give appropriations to, like, the parking wreck, the school, the art. Yeah. Yes.
This is just parking wreck people?
Yes.
That is to make sure that he's aware of it.
Yeah, but they, they're not included in this. Yeah, that's what I was saying, but the Penhody people came and addressed us, and we explained this to them.
Correct.
Correct, I thought.
The business license is aware, yes.
Yeah. Okay, let me make sure.
Where'd you get around your twenty-eight?
Um, on twenty-eight, we got, um, all yays, right? I got, um, Lee first, Nate second, all yays.
Yep.
Any nays? Okay, hold, can, hold on. Alright. Now it's time for anyone to address the city council. No action will be taken at this meeting. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record prior to addressing the council. If there are certain groups that are representing or speaking on the same subject, we ask that you pick a representative to speak on your behalf. So is there anyone who would like to come and address the council at this time?
Hello. Hey. My name is Carla Edwards. I reside at Skipper Hill Lane in Solocaga. Um, Ms. Heath is my representative. Um, I came to the, um, initially to talk about one thing, but I wanna talk about one other thing. I came to the fire department yesterday, and I was inquiring about fires. I wanted to know if I have a barrel, and I smell smoke, and I see smoke, but I don't see a fire. Is there really a fire there? And yes, there is. There's a reason why you have so many job vacancies. Okay? I used to work for the city clerk's office here. We started with eight people. Do you know how many are still there now? One. One. The police department has thirteen cars, and Mr. Hekel said on Jimmy Down's show that he wanted every police officer eventually have a take-home car because that was a great incentive for the police department. And I don't disapprove of that, or, or one way or the other. But does the general public know that the city pays for their gas, the shot of people to do their oil, and wherever else they go? Okay, and those vehicles are on the road every day, all day. So it's not like your general vehicle that just gets, you know, forty or fifty thousand miles on it. I mean, it has a lot of miles on it. That's why you have to buy them so quickly. Because they run up a lot of miles every single day. But I feel like I'm on the Oprah Winfrey shopping, 'cause you get a car, and you get a car, but you don't get a car, and you get an allowance, but you don't get an allowance. It's crazy. If y'all are gonna have a policy, have it all the way across the border. Because when I worked for the city clerk's office, Patricia Carden went to the mailbox, and she went to the bank. Kim Morris went to the mailbox, and she went to the bank. And I'm sorry, Alex, I don't mean to be ugly to you, but you get a $250 cycling, and you told us.
Carla, Carla, can we, can we just not speak to the employees directly? You can say hi, wanna say. Let's just not call it.
Okay, that's fine.
That's okay.
But we were told June of last year that we couldn't take our personal vehicles to the mailbox anymore because I went at 4:45 every day. 'Cause I never took a lunch. So I went at 4:45 to mail those shakes that I made every week, every day. We were directed and told we could take a city vehicle to the bank or to the post office. So then, why does the city clerk get a $250 cycling to do that when she doesn't take her vehicle? I know because I took it. Now let me tell you about the vehicle that I took. I took it twice. I took the small F-150, and I took the little bitty one. I took the big one and the little one. Both of them broke down on me. I had a dress on and high-heeled shoes. It broke down on me in the middle of the road.